Okay, thank you. Everybody, welcome to the June, the date today. The 18th Angels Council City Council meeting. Roll call please.
Yeah. Councilmember Brolio.
Here.
Councilmember Shemente.
Here.
Councilmember Sharato.
Here.
Vice Mayor Makata.
President Mayor.
President.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item six, report out of possession, direction was given on all three items to staff. Items. Approval of the agenda as listed or amended is in good accordance with the amendments. Any member of the public have any amendments to the agenda? Seeing then, I would like to hear a motion for approval of the agenda as listed.
Seven.
And second.
Six.
Do I have a first and a second? If you can roll calls, please.
Yes, Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Makata.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
And Sharato.
Aye.
Item eight is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that meets jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Any public comments? Seeing none, and nobody's online with us tonight. Thank you for that. We will move on to item nine. This is our consent agenda. We have four items on consent. Anybody have any reason to pull any items? I would like to pull item D, which is our AP and Treasurers Report. Any member of the public have any reason to pull any items? Okay, seeing none. We'd be looking for a motion on A, B, and C, the minutes of each of those dates.
I'll link motion for A, B, and C.
I'll second.
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Makata.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
And I, yeah, I'll say aye on that as well. And then, item D, the reason that I pulled this is because I had a couple of questions that I went over with Michelle earlier, and she gave me the answers, and I just wanted to kind of inform you guys about the answers in case you had similar questions. If you look on the AP report, on page, for example, page thirteen of our packets, and then it kind of carries on throughout, it has the item listed as US Bank Corporate Payment, and then it has an amount, and it says like Dollar General. So when I looked at this, I thought, what in the world do we spend at Dollar General for $1,300? And, and I saw that kind of throughout US Bank for blinds and building and planning office for $670. I was like, wow, those are really nice blinds. Well, what Michelle told me is the, the vendor is our US Bank credit card.
Right.
And then that's carrying over on the description is one of the many uses. It's like a payment on the credit card for $1,300, one of which was a Dollar General charge. So she has provided us with the US Bank statements, so we see how it equaled $1,300 and how it equaled $670, because it just stood out to me as not being something that I was comfortable with without having this back-up information. So that's what's sitting in front of us tonight, and she said moving forward, she's going to kind of do this as a...
So you have the packet behind the AP report, so you could reference it, since it won't print out on the report that way?
So that was it. That was what we read after, and I thought I'd bill y'all in on it. Any other question? So any members of the public want to comment? Okay. So now we'd be looking at a motion on this.
I'll break the motion.
We have a motion, second. And second.
Seven.
Then, we have a motion and a second, so you can go call.
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Makata.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks.
We are now moving on to our regular agenda. Item A is the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program, you would prefer, actually, Amy.
There are councilmembers, you can see that work has been ongoing. They're concentrating on the playground at this point, again, gearing up for the arrival of our deliveries of the playground equipment. They've also been working on the mine shafts, excavating away from there, so that they can implement engineering plans for either filling or fencing, which we will be bringing to July 2nd. Apologies, it's not here at this time. They're trying to finalize the cost for that. And the week of July 8th is when the Mark Twain Rehabilitation will actually be undertaken at the Carriage House for the bank. Would like to follow that, and I'll be happy to ask your questions.
So, Amy, do you think it's time that we insert a newsletter in our water bill, just kind of updating folks on the park and what's going on, because, so that there isn't misinformation, and we can maybe stay ahead of the curve and talk a little bit about the fact that it's a 307-day contract, and, you know, we're moving forward with plans, and yada, yada, however you want to say it. I don't know how you folks feel, but...
Or what's going on? Is the newsletter still being updated and sent out for the Utica Park update?
I don't know the status of that, because our city administrator was doing that.
Yeah.
So I don't know on that, and, again, I'll have to follow up to find out on the enclosure for the, to find out what steps that will become. But it has been something that was planned.
Right.
To go forward.
Yeah, my, my little concern is that there's, it's great that there's activity, and we're seeing it, and everyone's talking about it, but we talked a little bit at our last meeting about kind of continuity, making sure that there's not going to be any delays for the next design part that has to get approved, or the next, is, have we, you have in your staff report that you talk about design for the next, completion of the plans, and for the next phase, how it kind of works on the next element can then begin. Are we certain that that's going to become fluent enough and not going to have any delays in the 300 days of working that's spent? Have we worked these 300?
Yes.
307, yeah. See what I'm saying?
Well, I, I know...
I know you don't have a crystal ball.
He's right. I know that people are working on it. I know they were asking me questions. I know they're showing me some preliminary drawings. So based on that, I would say yes.
Okay.
And they've been calling us out to the field to go over details of plans. So based on that, I would have to say yes.
So it's a 307-day total contract.
Correct.
And the plan is still to try to get the park open, the playground area open, and then coordinate off and let, okay?
That is still our plan.
Okay. So playground equipment is ended sometime in July, and then, do we have any kind of conceptual idea when we're going to see the rest of the construction documents, the rest of the plan?
So what will come first is the bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to come next.
Right.
And then, based upon our July 2nd conversation, it will either be plugging or fencing.
Yep.
There. They then have under schedule, I believe they're actually going to be working on the pavilion, and they also wanted to move in gym equipment as soon as we have funding, we have a likely source of a contribution for that, and so we want to nail that down and get that, that order to you back.
We had talked at one time about some of the construction debris from the parking lot, maybe could get used as a polygacht.
And that was rejected due to the nature of the fill that they needed.
Are they doing a foam fill?
No, over time.
No, that would be difficult. I know, I've seen that footage. And then they're catching.
Yeah.
Give it forever. I don't see that. I think your point has validity in terms of sending out a timeline to people. I just think that if we can, let's stick to the online newsletter, just for cost purposes, because I think some people don't open their bills, so...
Yeah, I just, I just worry, because what is that, like 170? How many people are online, the newsletter?
199 right now.
Okay.
You do push it out on our Facebook page, and people click on too.
Okay.
That I don't, I'm assuming you're not counted in that hundred and, right?
And, and I'm, I'm okay with, I just, I would just like to say ahead of the curve, and if, you know, and, you know, when, if somebody walks up to Jen, who's just a private citizen, hey, I just read that the park, and this is what we're doing, and so, you know, we all can kind of just be on the same page. I think that just sounds...
Well, there's a lot of misinformation.
There is.
So, do you like the foam court and put it on the signs that are at the park?
So...
Like with a timeline?
The, um...
If that's what you're, I mean, we're going to...
So you do know, we have already ordered, and I believe they're in the process of printing that up, this insectical sign, the diagram, which will be going up very soon.
Okay.
We can add, we have a QR code. I was going to say that we could actually...
See, that'd be cool, because you could click on it.
Yes.
You know, to be constructed.
Right. So if they wanted to change what's behind the QR.
Yeah.
So we were hoping to add that.
That'd be cool.
I, I like that, because I worry about stale information, or if we, you know, get delayed by a week, then our, our information is out there.
We gave them a approval on the final, the final a week ago, so my guess is that...
Can we put those QR codes of course office also where we set up our agenda, just so it's another place? Please. Yeah, I'd love to see also just estimated, the completion date of just like fall, or spring, or summer of 2025, or whatever it is that we're looking at.
It puts it to March, right?
It, it puts it in, in there in the February, early March.
Yeah, so spring of 2025 would be great.
For everything.
Yeah, for total completion, and maybe touch on that the playground area may be available this summer. I may have entered up that. People online.
So what was, what was your...
I just said 2025. I didn't say a month. I was going to say November, but I think if you guys can do spring, that'd be great.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, a public comment on this item? Thank you so much. Yeah, great news, Amy. It's, it's good to see the activity out there. We are now on item B. This is a public hearing to consider the continuation of the assessments for fiscal year 2425 for the landscaping and lighting district number two, Greenhorn Creek Assessment, and then adoption of resolution 24-52 approving the engineer's report and confirming the diagram and assessment and the ordering of continuation of assessments for fiscal year 2425. Michelle?
Yes. So we were going to have Kyle Cantor from SCI present this tonight, but since we're not connected, we could call him, we need to. But in the, in the LLD assessment, being part of the committee, we reviewed their projected expenses that LLD had for fiscal year 2425, and it was determined that there would not need to be an increase, and so they're proposing that it stays the same at $650 per, was it unit or?
Partial.
Partial. Because if they have an ADU, they can get charged double, so. And, and that there would be no change, and that would be sufficient to cover what they needed to get done in this next fiscal year. So that's what they're proposing here in their plan, that there would be no change, which you say.
Do we have to open a public hearing?
Yes, so that was the...
Step the stage.
Yes.
As you can, but they're saying you don't need to. We have the ability.
It says the maximum authorized assessment rate for the fiscal year has been increased by 2.62.
That was what was proposed.
That was what was proposed, but we're saying...
There was a five-year plan, and they proposed each year.
We don't need an assessment.
But after looking at the expense, that they would maintain same and not request.
Go on.
They wanted, that was really important.
That's...
We're just opening the public hearing.
We like that. Okay, so I would like to officially open public comment on this item. Any member of the public have any comment on this discussion of this rate increase? Seeing none, seeing nobody online with us tonight. I will close the official public hearing, and looking for a motion on the resolution and direction.
I just have a question.
You go ahead.
And Tom, I asked a question before, is, do we legally have to list the person's name and the APN number? Can we just redact the name of the property owner and just list the APN number? I'm, I'm a little, I guess it's because of my, as I said previously, my previous background, a little bothered by that much information being out there in the public. I mean, anybody can search anything, but we make it a lot easier for them to do it with this document.
We practice as both.
As both?
I've seen it, yeah.
So what is your, what is, what is your pleasure, folks, about redacting?
So it is very available to the public. I don't have a problem for this purpose of maybe like redacting last name. I don't know, or redacting a physical address, or part, part of the, like how you would a social security number, is that what you're asking?
I, I just think having a name out there could be troublesome. You know, I mean, you, anything can be searched, but this becomes a matter of public record, and somebody can just, you know, pull our board packet and go through that list of names and...
It's interesting. I can tell you also that if you go to the tax collector's website, and you just look up the APN, you'll get that same information.
Right.
So I understand what you're saying, because it's like a flip side of that, is I know there are revenue taxation codes that protect police officers, firefighters, school teachers where you can get your information entirely, and get it off the assessor's website. So I see what you're saying, but I feel like it's still available.
Even on this. And then you have some people who are not being transparent.
Right.
You guys want to...
It's like a question for 22.
All you have to do is say, okay, Mike, and I'll let's get off that.
How about I say we'd be as easygoing with it as we can be?
I, I get it. I, I get it. I just, yeah, I just, I get it.
I mean, we've had members of Greenhorn Creek on council, and they've had to do this every few years, so they didn't have it pulled up by me either.
That's fine. I'm okay with it.
I'm gotcha.
I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Well, it's a valid concern.
It is a valid, it is, yeah. It's people's information.
A whole neighborhood, here you go.
Yeah. Okay, so we are looking for a motion to adopt the resolution, and then to approve the engineer's report and order continuation of assessment. So I think it's kind of a three-part motion we're looking for. Is that right, Tom?
It's all in the resolution.
It's all, oh, so we're just going with the adoption of resolution 24-52.
I would like a resolution.
I'll second.
24-52.
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Makata.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Why? Why did not do it?
You will not get the microphone.
Okay, moving on to item C. This is an accepted approved resolution 24-49 for the conditionally awarded grant amount of $28,031 for the CHP's cannabis tax grant, fund grant program. See, I'm not even going to try to acronym that. Six, six, it's a big... Scott.
Basically what you said, the Angels Camp Police Department applied for a grant through the California CHP's Tax Fund Grant Program, and we were conditionally awarded the amount of $28,031 for, it's for basically the DUI enforcement and some training for the officers. And part of the grant is that it requires a approval from the city council accepting the grant in order to move forward. We did this grant, same grant, two years ago, I think, and we were once again awarded that amount from it. So we're just requesting the adoption of resolution 24-49 in order to accept the grant and move forward with the program, start July 1st of this year.
Questions?
So Scott, I, is it a breathalyzer? How do you know someone is under the influence?
Driving impairment.
Oh, just...
It's mostly driving impairment. So for, for marijuana, there's few tests, other than field sobriety test applied, it doesn't matter what you're under the influence of, field sobriety tests are going to tell you whether somebody's impaired or not.
Okay.
Just determining exactly what that is will be contingent on whether we believe it's alcohol, or whether we believe it's some sort of drug or narcotic, and that which would require a blood, a blood test in order to make that determination.
And have you seen the increase rise because of now it's legal?
Cannabis, I think that's the purpose of this grant program, is to help us make those determinations, get more officers out there for enforcement, and, you know, obviously we will identify the type of impairment it is during the investigation if somebody is arrested for DUI. There's separate sections in the vehicle code for alcohol, drugs, et cetera, that we charge, so there's a way for the state to track, you know, what a person was, what kind of DUI a person was arrested for. This basically will put additional officers on the streets focusing on DUI enforcement and impairment enforcement.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a question. And this is primarily for training, for awareness, or is this often, also going to be like checkpoint?
No, it's primarily for overtime enforcement activities from current patrol staff, police staff. So we'll be hiring back officers to come in on overtime basis to do DUI enforcement.
Check, checkpoint? We call them checkpoints? Are they not?
Not necessarily checkpoints, just an extra body out there that's out there looking for people that are under the influence, driving around, looking for driving observations, pulling cars over, and making a determination of whether they're, now, we could do a DUI checkpoint. The problem with that is manpower a lot of times, because you can't run a DUI checkpoint with one or two people. It takes at least four to five people to run a single DUI checkpoint. We have partnered with CHP in the past, years ago, but that is, that is something that we could do.
Public comment?
I have a question.
Okay, so what we have you do is we'll have you come up to the podium and make sure you write your name and your phone number down in case we need to reach back out.
I am sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
It's okay. And then...
We've actually just waited and asked you a question.
Okay, so what do I have to do?
Is there a piece pick right there?
No, there's not. Just your name.
That's okay. Thank you. The only reason that we ask that is if something comes up where you, like I had mentioned, with public comment, if we need to reach back out to you, we can't address anything now without it being agendaized.
Okay, what do you need besides my name?
Contact.
Okay. Phone number?
Sure.
Email? What do you need?
Whatever you want to give us.
Blood type.
Tell me.
Firstborn child. Okay, hold on, let's get to this. Okay, okay, it's all on here.
Perfect.
So. I just had a question about what the grant was for, because you guys said it was like a kind of a two-parter, like it was a DUI, and then it was also for cannabis. So in the field, how do, what do you have to implement that cannabis, like to check if they're under the influence right now, for if they're high? I mean, I don't know that's...
It's, it's twofold. One of them is driving observations.
Okay.
So if somebody's under the influence of something, there's certain indicators that we look for in their driving behaviors.
Okay.
Which may result in a traffic stop for us to investigate whether the person might be impaired or not. The second part would be a field sobriety test, which a sober person would normally be able to pass all the field sobriety tests. An impaired person, we're not going to necessarily know unless they tell us that they're impaired and they've just been smoking a bunch of marijuana.
Okay.
You know, that that's what it is.
Yeah.
That's just part of the investigation process. We won't know that for sure until we get the results from the lab saying, this is what the person was under the influence of at the time of the investigation, at the time of the stop. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So right now, you guys have a breathalyzer for...
Alcohol overdose.
For alcohol. So with the cannabis, marijuana, which we're also having a really huge problem up here with other things coming into factor, other than the blood test, how long does a blood test take to get back?
Oh, it could be, it could be weeks, but that's not going to stop an arrest from happening.
Okay.
That's just going to be proof when it goes to court to show that this is the level of intoxication that they had, whether it was drugs or alcohol, because same, you're going to get the same results from a blood test. A blood test is going to give you whatever drugs are in the system, whatever amount of alcohol is in the system, to support the investigation conducted by the officer.
Okay, so there's nothing at this point that you guys have to use to determine that, other than just observation?
There's not an infield tool, like we have the breathalyzer for alcohol. There's nothing for cannabis that's been...
Nothing on the market that's come out?
I, I think that they're definitely working on some things, but there's not like a standard I led. The breathalyzers that we get, we get, they're loaners basically from the Department of Justice.
Oh.
So they're not like something that we buy over the counter or anything like that. They come from DOJ, they get serviced by DOJ. We report all the information to the Department of Justice on a, every 10 days. We have to upload it and, and send the information off to the Department of Justice.
Okay.
So that's what, that's the significance of the, that's why those are court-proven, you can use those in court as your evidence, and that's why for drugs and, you know, if, you know, cannabis, whatever, whatever classification you want to make it, it would have to be a blood test, because that's the only way you're going to get an actual content from the person.
At their level.
Yeah, because a breathalyzer isn't going to give you that result, so it may give you alcohol.
Okay, that was just my question. I just wanted to know if there's something on the market.
I have a question, Scott. I just remembered something. So at my work, thank you for your public comment, thank you so much. At my work, drug testing is, I don't want to say available, it's necessary. And one of the things that came up is with cannabis, with marijuana in your system, it's in your system for a long time. So you go to an Ironstone concert Saturday night, you have a great time, you come to work on Monday, you're not under the influence, but it shows in your system. So if you're drug tested at work, they, they, my employer, and what we're being told is that there's a way that they would know that you weren't impaired on Monday, but yet it was in your system at a different toxicology level or whatever. And part of how they would do that would be by sitting the employee down and talking to them about their habits. Like, how often do you smoke pot? Or, or how often did you use last night? Did you, and what was it? So, so like, how much is in your system, and how compacted it is in your system versus someone that just did it at their lunch break?
Yes.
You're not going to...
So we're not looking for levels. Our, our, the biggest part of our investigation is going to be the driving observations and the, how they did on the field sobriety test. You know, your traditional, your finger-to-no stuff, your nine-step walk, the one-legged stand, the...
If he sees backwards.
The wrong...
I cannot do it.
That's not a test, that's not a test that we, but we have a whole plethora of others. There's science-based tests that we're now trained in, that we utilize as our primaries. There's also secondary tests, because sometimes people, you know, have something wrong with their leg or whatever, so maybe there's a test or two that we can't use, so there's alternative tests that we can use as well. So all that blood test is telling us, is going to tell us is there was something on board. Their driving, all the other stuff is going to, what is going to help build the case to Their driving, all the other stuff is going to, what is going to help build the case to show that that was part of their, you know, there was impairment there during their driving is based on the, the field sobriety test and the driving observations observed. Now sometimes we don't have driving observations. Sometimes you stop a car because the registration has expired and all of a sudden you contact the driver, but now there's a big smell of, you know, marijuana coming out the window. Or there's, you see cans of alcohol in the car or they smell, smell of alcohol. So now that, that's a different, you know, that's a different, different piece of it. And then you're building your case based on your field sobriety tests and how they perform during those.
I got you. That makes much sense for me. Any other public comment? Any other?
I don't.
I just want to say congratulations. It's great to see that this has come around a second time. So, great job.
Well, we, we passed on it, I think last year just because of our staffing, you know, it just, I, I, we were overworked as it was and, and so I wasn't going to say, okay, now there's overtime. Now you gotta come in and work overtime too. So we've, we've gotten back to a place where I felt like it was another good time to let's do this again and, and get some extra enforcement out there. It's always nice for the guy working patrol to know that there's still another officer in town, you know, to assist or whatever. So there, there's definitely a benefit there as well.
You know, it just seems more problematic than blood alcohol. I mean, it's-
It, it, it definitely is.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it definitely causes a different sort of problem, you know, different kind of problems. And, you know, it's going to be for the courts also to make those determinations on how they're going to, you know, handle those. It's just a different, different process and drugs and alcohol are two different things and the body's behavior to those are, are different. Alcohol is just the most common one that you deal with most regularly. Cannabis is kind of the new alcohol with the legalization of cannabis. So there's just more of it out there now. And there's, you know, you can be impaired and be driving with, under the influence of cannabis, just like you can alcohol. You can overdo it. And then you can be under the influence of cannabis and it not affect your driving and not affect, you know, your field sobriety test. And in that case, then you're not going to be, you know, arrested for driving under the influence. It's all about your ability to handle that 3,000 pound vehicle or whatever it is that you're driving down the road and the safety concern involved in that.
Okay, so we are looking for the acceptance of resolution 24-49 for this grant.
Want a motion?
Motion?
Very quick on this. One second.
Shemente?
Aye.
Grolio?
Aye.
Mokata?
Aye.
Bernadette?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item D, this is a public hearing on the closeout of CBVG number 20, CBVG 1202, for the Angels Camp Fire Station planning of 250,000 and authorize the submission of the closeout certification. Michelle.
Yes. So we received a planning grant to build fire station next to the police department. The total planning grant was 250,000 and of that we spent in architectural design 84,247 dollars and 50 cents. So there is a balance of 165,752.50. We didn't physically receive all of that money. We've just been reimbursed for the 84,000. So it's time to close out the grant. It ends September 1st of '24, but they like us to do it here in June as soon as possible so we can disencumber the money. And originally, because we didn't go forward with building the fire station due to the potential, we had thought we would get a grant that would pay for the building of a fire department and found out that it was a lot less. It was going to maybe two or three million. Whereas the project's going to cost a lot more in the 15 million dollar range even for a bare bone structure. So originally CBVG was going to find out if we needed to pay back the 84,000 and they said we don't because it was a planning grant and we went through and we planned. So we need to have the council make a decision. So they gave us three options and that's on the resolution to determine if we want to, how we want to proceed. So it would be to build the fire station, to- I was just going to find my three options.
It's on the next page, Kate.
Is it?
It's right. There you go.
Find an alternative, alternative location or to deem the project too costly to build. Now, a part of this planning grant allowed us, we had to, from the beginning of the planning grant, we had five years to complete the fire station. So we only have two years left in this grant. So if we were to decide to find an alternative location or try to build it, option one and two, we would have to complete that in two years. So your third option is then to deem it too costly and then we would close this out and then proceed with, you know, we wouldn't have to pay anything back.
But we would own the plans.
We do own the plans.
And we don't owe the money back.
And we don't owe the money back.
Correct.
So Michelle, does this hamper our ability to go up for an additional grant because we weren't able to successfully complete this grant?
I did ask that question of our consultant and no.
Okay.
It does not.
But we did complete it. We did plan it.
Well, I'm just worried about future funding.
Right. Yeah, we just didn't use the entire amount.
And we do have plans that are like bare bones up to the Taj Mahal. So we have multiple plans for what we're looking at building. Because at one point we looked at incorporating the police department in there and, you know, council chambers and so we, we have two options in our plans.
You know, I, I just think that at some point on a future agenda item, and we talked about it previously, is for us to kind of wrap our heads around maybe more of a philosophical discussion about how do we master plan our facilities? And what, how best can we utilize what we have and what's the most cost effective way to kind of get where we want to be? So I, I, I look forward to that conversation.
Like a facility inventory too.
Yeah.
What do we own? What do we have? How can we use it best?
Right.
And that's come up multiple times even, planning for city hall and here in Molly. It's definitely a great, it's something we need to look at.
So where I struggle on making a decision on this is that I haven't seen the plans. I mean, I think we've seen a high level, but I don't know the variables of the plans. So like if they're valuable to us in the bare bones status, maybe we can move forward on those in bare bones and come up with a plan. I don't know, but that might involve another location because of what we just spoke about. And we do know that the project is too costly as it was hoped to have been because it came back at like nine million, I think, right?
Yeah, there was a range and with supplies filling up and-
I think just phase one was at nine. There's like different-
Yeah, I mean, the bare bones was, we had a bar area.
The bare bones was nine nine?
Something like that. The bare bones was, and then, and then you add it on, then you add it on another.
For me, this is a no brainer. I think it's a number three. I don't, we don't have, we don't, we don't have the funds and we don't have the time.
But we do own the plans.
We do own the plans. So that's something that we have.
And to one of those other options, we would also have to complete it.
In two years.
And then we have available to continue spending the 165,000 that we have.
But we can use those, the variations of plans possibly in the future for entering after more brand money.
And it could either be, yeah, at whatever location to be helped.
Kate, do we have public comment? Chief Rorba, do you have anything to say on this matter?
At this point, you know, it's very unfortunate, you know, we started this grant, it was right before COVID started and it's now-
So I'm going to have you come up to the floor. Thank you. I know you're tired.
I am tired. No question about that. Yeah, it's disappointing. It's disappointing because when we first got started on this before COVID started, it was, we were gung ho on it. Projections were going to be about $5 million. We were sort of pretty much guaranteed about $8 million is what the thought process was when we were going with the grant writer. And then when COVID hit, sort of, they, they had a year where they didn't give out any CBVG grants because we were supposed to apply then for that money. And then after that, then the amount went lower and then it started to become problematic. So I would personally agree with number three and I do think that as a city, we need to work together to figure out, what's the vision moving forward? How do we want to do it? What do we really need? Because there's a lot of future options coming up too, you know, here. Majorate happens to think about how we want to do stuff. So I think, and I think it's really good for us to come up with a plan for a vision of how we want our fire department to look and can we put some of the city departments together in the building and share that cause. So I, I'm okay with that. It's disappointing for us and we did go from plans A to B. We even did a small plan to do on Sierra and Angel Oaks over there on a small piece of property over there. So it's sad, but you know, COVID happened, it really changed things and then the, the rewards changed drastically. And building a fire station right now is about 1,500 dollars a square foot, you know? So it's really sad, you know, it's just how it is. So. So I'm okay with number three right now and I'm looking forward in the future, we could all get together and come up with an idea of what we want to do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Public comment?
Oh, can I please use you?
You don't have to write your name down.
What was your name by the way?
Bernadette.
Okay. Your son is a third?
Oh, yes. This is very, you're, you're to my heart. So I'm like, so I, I don't know how to go about saying this because it's like, it's, it's very frustrating to me because if, have any of you recently been to Altamal Fire Station and seen the condition of it or actually that's a different-
We're talking about city.
Oh, the city. Okay. Have you done an assessment of what the needs are? Are like what the, the needs are here or what?
We absolutely have.
What about?
City.
What about? Okay, so what about an expansion? There can't be an expansion?
It's not our jurisdiction.
Oh, okay. It's a different district. I was just curious to know like what, like you said, to move the funds into a different direction. So I'm just wondering like what direction would the funds go in? If it, you can't build another fire station, then what, where would the funds go to help out the fire department?
So what we'll do is we will, if you're passionate about this, we'll have you meet with a staff member at city hall and they can talk to you a little bit more about it because it's, we've been talking about this for a long time, like years in the grant. And it's for either our fire, our, our police station and potential fire station over at city hall or here. Either or, or different options of different locations with our fire station in mind.
Okay, I would love to meet with someone to know more about this project.
No, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Thank you. Any other public comment? Interesting. Then bring it back to council. We need to have a motion to adopt resolution 24-55.
I would say adopt resolution 24-55 with item, with option number three.
Second.
Shemente?
Aye.
Grolio?
Aye.
Mokata?
Aye.
Bernadette?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And so now we're ready to jump into budget.
No. RMRA funding.
SB one.
Oh, SB one road repair. Sorry. Adopt resolution 24-54 listing the project to be funded by SB one road repair and accountability act. Michelle.
It's okay. So every year we are required to take the counsel of project for the upcoming fiscal year with the SB one funds, the RMRA funding. Last year we went for crack sealing, purchased the crack sealer with those funds plus some additional supplies for that. So this is our, our project for the year 24-25. So the allocation for that year is 94,559. We do, we didn't spend all of the funds in this year, which they will roll over, but we need to close that first and it'll be available probably the next fiscal year. But in this project here, so I believe it was the last council meeting where we had talked about the pavement management and using I work and how Aaron Rusatori, the city engineer, had put together pricing so that we could identify an area that needed repairs and pavement management. And then we could get the cost to do those repairs to the road based on crack sealing. And so this project is focusing on the road. This cost here does not include anything for the, the speed tables that would be separately from this. But this is looking at repairs in that neighborhood to repair the roads. And that total cost would be 159,000, of which we are proposing to use our RMRA funds and then additional funded in gas tax. So we have about 200,000 in gas tax reserves. So we're looking at spending 65,000 of the gas tax upgrade of project to use that area. Some of us the test with the, with the crack sealing, the chip sealing and with microsurfacing. And then also the, the speed tables would be something in addition to that. We could use gas tax money. How would we proceed with that? This would be the first phase. So Chris was looking at, we would start in late summer, early fall with the project after it got a little cooler. And then finish that up in the next like four to five months. And so I think the work would be done in-house over the crack sealing, I believe the, in the microsurfing. But I believe there was a, a chip sealing that he said we would have to contract that out because we do not have to seal this. And so COWSMART requires us to have a resolution and upload it to their website before July 1st. So they have that here and then they accept the project. And then we go into reporting on the website on how that is spent, what was accomplished.
Clarification, is Gardner Way going to lane?
Is it Gardner Lane?
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
And you're so interested.
Yeah, so I can correct that.
And, and for full transparency, I live on Gardner Lane, so I'm going to recuse myself from this item so that I'm not making a decision.
The mayor's street.
The other thing I, I will speak to is as you mentioned, we had talked about Mike, we had talked about speed tables. And I don't really know how those two would partner. I, I would suggest that if this works being considered on Gardner Lane, that you would potentially consider including the speed tables and go out to bid with both. So it's done by one contractor at one time. I don't know how you would do speed tables and then have the microsurface come in over the top of the speed tables or vice versa. You don't want to muck up the nice new road with other work going on. So I think it was-
I think Chris had separated it because he was looking at that contract that we had spoke about before with the county. Use like the same company to come in and do the speed tables on that road.
Oh, and partner with the county on this as well?
Not this part, but the, the speed tables.
Right. So where I'm having difficulty is then hypothetically the speed tables happen in July and then they're down. And then this contractor comes in in, in August and has to go over the top of the speed tables. So there's-
He might know how to do that.
But there's a lot of starts and stops and, and jointments and buttonments and conformity and stuff. And it's, and then you're driving over new pavement on, so typically you don't want construction on top of construction because it chips away at the existing construction.
Right.
Or, or vice versa. This was done first and then the speed tables were to be later, big heavy equipment on. Anyway, so I would, I would make that-
So would recommend me to do the speed tables after?
No, I, I would recommend doing it as one continuing. If, if the funding source is the same, I would say go out to bidding.
The speed tables aren't. Yeah, it would be the gas tax.
But this isn't on part of the budget though.
Well, I'm recusing myself from it anyway. So I just, that might be-
If the projects can work together, I think is what she's saying.
Right.
Have them work together. So you're not doing one of them coming back. Right.
We're focusing on what we need to spend the RMRA funds and what project we chose for there. The speed tables is in, in addition to, and that would be, we would use gas tax funding. But that we broke out just for the purposes that we need to submit this and put a project together. But I understand, and I can talk to Chris about that concerns and the timing.
Yeah, I just think that if we could piggyback with the county though, there was an opportunity maybe to save some funding and things. So I don't know where the county is and maybe Chris can check. And maybe we can just, you know, speed up this timeline for the crack sealing. And so that it fall in line more. You know, I, just as an interesting aside, I'm sitting here looking it up, how much money we're collecting. And then with the movement going to all electric vehicles, is there going to be a surge charge when people go and recharge?
They're talking about that by tracking your mileage. And then you're paying by mileage, no matter what, you're driving electric or gas.
There's a program you can sign up for now. I think that's-
I don't know that anyone's going to voluntarily submit for that.
Right.
I thought there was, I thought there was a program out there right now where they were going to sign up to see how your mileage went or something.
I'm not signing up for that yet.
Neither am I. I thought there was something.
So at this point, there's not a way-
But that's the, probably the way in the future is tracking our mileage.
Public comment? Public comment? On our RMRA funding. Same then, bring it back to council.
Ready to all report? I'll make the motion to approve resolution 24-55.
I'll say.
Shemente?
Aye.
Grolio?
Aye.
Mokata?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Hi.
And all right.
Well, I spoke to public.
Yeah, with it.
She's not confused.
There's not a conflict because the public generally, the exception would apply. And you can, like, she's on the.
Gone, okay. She's quite fine. She's here.
Um, so now we're ready to go into budget. Can we take just a quick break? And, and then we'll come back and go on budget in, say, like, five minutes. Michelle, we are ready to talk about the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget.
Okay, so, um, I went back, um, from our discussion on the tenth, um, where, um, you had wanted some additional details. So I ended up pieces we spoke about was the fifty thousand and my add is for one time for vehicle. Um, and then I also added, um, fifty thousand, but that came from the ARPA money for hop and shop. So it would be two campaigns, one in the fall, I believe it happens around November, and then one in the spring around Mother's Day is when we traditionally do them, but we could do it anytime. And fund twenty-five thousand for each of those. So it would be a total of fifty thousand because we match. That would go back into the community for the vendors that participate in your hop and shop. Um, so that was added to the budget, but like I said, that was a wash because we are transferring money over. So after we transfer that, we have left in the ARPA reserve three hundred and fifty-one thousand. That would be available for future projects. That takes out four hundred thousand that we set aside for the pork.
Okay.
And so that's what we have left to talk about, um, how we would want to use that for, uh, community development or whatever happens to be necessary for it. Um, then we had, um, we spoke about consulting, um, and I would like to do a more thorough, and I'll, I'll bring this all, when we talk about future agenda items, but looking at consultants. But I did break out in the budget because it summarized outside consultants. So the council had questions about what was involved in that. And so in the planning budget, we had three hundred and sixty thousand in outside consultants. So that included a hundred thousand for planning. The building inspector was a hundred and fifty thousand. The surveyor, we had ten thousand in there. And then there was also a hundred thousand for annexation assistance. But that one was a wash because we had money coming in. That was a hundred thousand for annexation assistance, so it washed out. But that's what totaled, the three hundred and sixty thousand in outside consultants.
Gotcha.
Then code enforcement has its own line in there and we were budgeting forty-one thousand six hundred. And that goes down to one day, um, a week, um, in the budget for code enforcement. And I think in speaking, um, with our code enforcement officer, he, um, feels that's sufficient, but he said there might be, depending on the workload, he might need to request maybe once or twice a year an additional day. So I said we could look at how the spending was, were under budget for that for this current year. Um, for him, I think he needs one additional day.
I thought we had stepped him up to one additional day, or was that just periodic?
Uh, so originally we did. We had him scheduled for two days a week. And that became too much. And so we cut him back to one day a week at this current, but one, we didn't change it in the budget, but when we had originally budgeted, we budgeted for two days, so we.
So the forty-one six is consistent with one day a week?
Correct, yeah. And so what he shared with me is before the end of the year, but there's plenty of money in there, he's just going to have to work one additional day based on his current caseload to get through it. Um, and it didn't throw us over budget. And then he said going forward for this next year, he may occasionally have to do that, but for the most part, one day a week should be sufficient.
Sure.
Shall we ask a question? Not about the budget, about caseload. We never see, um, or maybe we do and I just don't remember, um, a report showing, you know, the, the number of code compliance and whether or not they're resolved or not. I think about the old saw shop downtown, you know, that building with a tree. And I'm just thinking, you know, what, where are we with that? You know, what was some of that stuff?
Is that one of the reports you were working on?
I am, I'm, I'm saying that for a report.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Rebecca had given it over to Caitlin. Um, and so she started pulling out of I work's, uh, data to report that to you. So that can come on a regular basis. We can include that with the, who's over there.
Thank you.
Then going into engineering, that's broken out through different budgets. We have a hundred and seventy thousand in engineering for building and planning, but that's offset by the building and planning fees we receive. Um, then we have under the department engineering, um, the general fund engineering, which makes up city projects, which is forty-five thousand. We had put in circulation engineering at a hundred thousand and then also transportation assistance at twenty-five thousand. So that's what holds that hundred and seventy thousand for engineering in the engineering department budget. Um, and then we also have engineering in water and wastewater. Um, that totals a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So that engineering is with Dewberry currently, um, and they are asking for us to look at task orders for, um, the next year. But I think we really need to look at those services and, um, that was going to be my future agenda, which we can talk about, but I, it's budgeted for in the budget, but we need to look at, um, at those services because I know there were those discussions about giving an RQ and looking at other places. Even the projects that we have still. So currently under Dewberry, we have a few projects that are still open, like the Angels Creek Trail. We have the sewer line here, the east, um, sewer line that's underway. Uh, we're closing out Murphy's Square Road so that, that's all done, but we're, but we're closing out the money portion of it. And, um, and then we have the sign project that is currently underway. So those are the active. Uh, Aaron Rusatory is, works for a consultant for Dewberry. And he's going now off onto his own, but he still contracts back to the consultant.
Yes.
So. And then, let's see. Um, and then I was going to also look at, so going through and kind of looking at all of our contracts that we have for consultants, I think that was something that you, um, wanted to look at. We also have, um, a hundred and eighty-two thousand in the budget for IT services. Um, and because it's split out in different areas, so combining it between water, wastewater and the, the general fund, um, that is, um, for our IT consults mainly with, um, PONF and, um, providing support. There's a cost per cap, like, so I just, you can also look at that cost and see if that is still, um, feasible, the contract that we have with them.
Video, file it.
Hey. Any questions on those? And then there was a question about reserve accounts. Um, we wanted to know how much we had in our sewer funds and our water funds in the reserve. Um, so currently in water, we have a reserve of six point six million. And in wastewater, we have sixteen point six million in reserves. Um, that's at the beginning of the year. We do have budgeted in this budget, about two million out of each for capital projects for the year. So that would reduce that. And then we'd have some income also coming in. So that's us right now at the end of fiscal year.
And we talked about, um.
We did, yeah.
That additional fifty thousand for legal services coming out of reserves instead, so that would.
You know.
So we can.
I still had that other funding.
Correct. So we're negotiating. That was the direction they gave, how you want to spend that. So we will pull that from reserves. And I believe in the general fund reserves are on one point seven billion.
Yeah, because that's a one-ten cost.
Correct. Yeah, one point seven four two is the reserves committed in the general fund right now. And that's not the, the general plan or any of the, the monies we set aside. We have another one point seven billion set aside in the, um, general plan reserve. Um, but this is just in the general fund.
Thank you for doing all of that additional research.
Research for us based on the questions from our last meeting. Again, great job on this.
It was. Excellent job.
Good.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Other questions?
So you're not, are you currently projecting any income from Habitat, um, with planning? Is that kind of built in or are we just going to add it as we go?
We did, we did plan. Um, so originally Habitat was saying about four houses and we had a cost per our unit.
Okay.
Um, and so we took it back and I think we, we budgeted in about two, about half that. Uh, so there could be more planning or building and planning fees that come in for that, but we wanted to scale it back and do about half of what they were projecting in the income.
I have nothing but other than a comment real quick on that. Um, I mean, with code enforcement in building, we're up to a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Uh, we could maybe, I don't know if you could get somebody that could do both all the time, but we can maybe start looking to hire somebody for a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So anyway, something for this coming year to maybe think about or look about, but I'm all for this. Let's pass it.
What, you said about which two positions?
The code enforcement and the building. Which are, who we contract out at this income.
As a building director or building inspector? Or like, are you thinking inspector for both? Yeah.
I think we can speak a little bit to, there's two different levels with that. We have the building inspector.
We only have the building official.
Right, I know. I don't know if you can get a plan check. I don't know if you can get all that for.
One.
One person.
Maybe still contracts for those weird things that we would need.
Right, we'd have to break it out and look at it. I'm the same, I'm just, I'm just throwing out that there's a good chunk of money spent there and you may not have, it may not work. I don't, just something to think about.
I would definitely like to dive into more of our, our consulting contracts and look at that. See if it's still feasible.
Yep.
Public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
Comments?
Rebecca, need to.
Are you writing my name down?
Yeah, that's all right.
You'll get this on me, I think. In the mission statement, accountability and efficiency, it only cost us five hundred dollars for the permit, but it was six months of going back and forth with.
CMG.
CMG. Um, and then I know like when Greg came up in the building, or the inspector came up in the building, he was there for eleven minutes. So I don't know if you're getting the money's worth with the inspector. If all that back and forth and all the emails and the calls and we're deep into this and it's still unopen kind of thing, it just don't, there's got to be a more efficient way or at least some way where you can see accountability for if it's just a flat hundred and fifty thousand for him to do his inspections for our town, our city. But, you know, that hole upstairs in the building that we're in, the inspector was there for eleven minutes. Literally, we're timing stuff like that as recipients of being inspected and doing the thing we're doing. So that, I would think that it would be very frugal, according to your mission statement, to find somebody that could do this in-house, just so that there is more accountability. Because that would benefit the users of it. Because I know you went over five hundred dollars dealing with us for six months to go over code and historical code and it came down to just a fire issue that wasn't enforced in another building down the street. So I feel very jipped.
You can't say that.
No.
Bruce, I'm guessing.
Sorry. I feel, uh, that there's not, what's the word I'm looking for? You can talk to the actual there. So I write his name down too. Yeah. You want me to write on here?
You're good. I have the paper I can write for you.
So, so part of the issue that I've had with our whole experience is that, uh, we went in, sat in, had a meeting with the, it was, uh, it was the new inspector, I believe it was his first day there. Uh, we had the guy that actually did the plan checking on, on, um, uh, over the internet. Didn't want to see his face, that's cool. And then their boss, I believe the steward was. And, um, and you were there? And, uh, then the city administrator was there. So, um, I adule showed up late and I didn't know who the inspector, I didn't know who the inspector was. And, um, and he was making, uh, not to, that doesn't matter, I guess. But the, um, he, uh, when I, when I walked in, uh, there was a talk about what, what, on the plans are supposed to specify what codes we're following on these plans, which we didn't. And he kept saying that we didn't, but it was right there in the middle of the cover sheet, right where it's supposed to be. All blueprints happened, they were there. And, and, uh, I asked him a very blunt question, what should it look like? And I told him, it don't need to be dirt, but this, here's a certain font it needs to be, certain color it needs to be. You're saying it's wrong, it's not on there, what's it need to be? And, and he just kept telling me that the guy doing the plans should know what it's supposed to be. And it's like, it's right there, it's on the page. And then, um, and then, uh, and then throughout the whole thing, the, the guy that did the plan check, I apologize, can't remember his name, and their boss were there on the line the whole time. They had been asked direct questions by several people at that table, to which they had, they didn't respond, period. They were tuned out. They didn't, pardon my language, they didn't give a shit. They were not focused, they were at the meeting, but they weren't paying attention to anything going on. They didn't care about it at all. They showed up to build you guys and that was it. Um, then, uh, and then a little bit later, the inspectors all, I didn't know anything about the, about the historical building code before this, so I looked up last night and the historical building code is wrong. Well, that's cool, probably not the most appropriate place to be saying that and it's not his to judge that. The code is the code regardless of which. And as many times as we sent the, the, um, the plans back, not one comment came back this entire time referencing the historical building code, not one. They continued to reference the regular building code and not once the historical building code, which my understanding was that this building is, you know, the first or the second one in the city that is historical building. So that's the code it's supposed to follow. But these guys either don't agree with that, don't care about that, or honestly, in my opinion, they're just grabbing more, more of the city's money. That, you know, I'm assuming that they're getting paid every time they send back the thing, they're not charging a one-time fee for that. I don't know. So fast forward later, later in the, um, we got, we got to the, um, got to the part about the firewall, we hashed that out, got that figured out, that worked out, okay, cool. We had a little bit of homework to do on it yet, but we do, but we at least had a March order, sort of, order to that. At the end of the meeting, we circled back to, we circled back to what it started when I got there, talking about what the, what it's supposed to look like on the plans when we call out what code we're following. And the, the plan checker guy, I wish I could remember his name.
Dan, I want to let you know, one more minute.
Sorry, anyway. He says, hey, let me chime in on this, I can answer this. I'm like, the plan checker, he's the one that looks at it, tell him what it's supposed to look like. And you go, and, and he, he goes, well, the reason you need to have the firewall, blah, blah, he just goes on about the firewall. Couldn't, he didn't, didn't answer the question that had been, that we were on, something we had finished twenty minutes prior. You know, but that's, that's, yeah, I'm, I, I don't know if that's how these guys are all the time, but it seems pretty blatant to me that these guys are not the right fit for the city, one way or the other. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, same then. I definitely think that that's something that we need to keep as a, as a future agenda item and I, and I know we've talked about it, um, a lot over the years. My understanding is bringing in an in-house, um, there was a local contractor one day that we were in a meeting with and he was saying, you know, used to be back in the day with this inspector and then not mentioning any names. Um, and so we said, great, you, yourself, you're getting ready. And so we said, great, you yourself, you're getting ready to retire in a year or two. Can you come be our, our future plan checker? And he said, ah, I mean, you know, and it was like, well, you have to go through certifications and you have to go through all these things to get licensed and you have to, it's a career path at this point in your retirement. And he said, I don't want to do it. And that's where we're at. I can tell you at the city, the building department and the planning department have so much turn, I'm sorry, at the county, the building department and the planning department both have so much turnover, they cannot fill those positions at the director level or down at the inspector level. So it's easier said than done, but I definitely think that we need to take a look at our current consultant and try to beat the streets and see if there's any, anybody out there that would be a good fit like it used to be, that already has the certifications and is willing to buy into it. But it, it's something we need to consider at the future. Sam.
I have information given to me that the county land department has released three inspectors.
It's the building department.
Building department. So they go out and do building checks and so on.
But they've been released to other departments at the county already?
Not that I'm aware. As I understood, they were like, you know, terminated. I don't know. Or checking.
Before we go down this rabbit hole and say that for. So I'd like to make the motion that we move forward with the adoption of this twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which is resolution twenty-four fifty-three.
I'll second.
Chamenta?
Aye.
Brolia?
Aye.
Hada?
Aye.
Shwana?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Administration report. I probably didn't report out properly out of closed session earlier, but at this time I would like to mention on administration that for public reference, Ms. Rebecca Callen has tendered her resignation. So she's no longer a city administrator. And we would like to publicly thank her for her time that she, she's spent with us here and wish her the best in her future endeavors. We also, I'd like to touch on the fact that everybody knows with the fire, that what's going on right now. I think as of right now, we might all have power and city hall got power back. We got power here today. So thank you to the public for being so patient. And we hope that your family and your loved ones are happy and healthy. And everyone is doing what they can. We were able to open up the two evacuation centers. One's at Mark Twain Elementary, the other's out of the high school. In direct communication and contact with both our fire chief and our police chief for the last day or so. Tomorrow is a holiday. For those of you that don't know, if you call in the city, if you have questions about the resources that are available or whatever you're going through, if you have your power back or not or whatever, we're getting a lot of calls. But tomorrow you're going to get a dialer because it's a, it's a federal holiday, Juneteenth.
You might want to also talk about our next steps with respect to our city administrator.
Right. So as we reported out of closed session, direction was given to staff that we're going to consider a solution for an interim city administrator. And hopefully that will be one day next week. We'll have that agendized. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Michelle, do you have any administrative report that you'd like to bring to us at this time?
Just that I had met with, normally Rebecca was leading a project update meeting with all of our consultants on current projects that we have going on the city because a lot happening. So I went ahead and had held the meeting because I normally participate into it. So I do have an update that I can put in the PATPIT for July 2nd of where we're at on all of the projects and kind of keep things going. And we agreed that we would continue to meet monthly to do an update and it kind of checks in with all the consultants and so we continue that. So that we make sure, because I knew all of the building side of the projects. So this would just be coordinating and finding any resources that the council and state need so we could continue moving forward with city.
Is there an update? Did the construction start on the parking?
I think they were wrapping it up and they'll probably touch on it tomorrow. That'll be done in a day or so.
And if you come by city hall on Thursday or Friday, we do have a new wall up, a new counter up front. Mike had asked a question. I followed up with the building inspector and also with our contractor about ADA compliance. So we had two options. He said we could add a smaller table, but there really wasn't room that we could hold down there. But we can also provide a space, which is what we've done in the past. And then there's a clear shot for a wheelchair to go back to the conference room that would give them an area to meet. So we would be in compliance with that. So this weekend coming up, they will put down the flooring and hopefully finish up the paint. And then we're hoping that we're be close to being done on the project.
Counselor Hart, Mr. Chamenta, we're going to start with you.
I think we've all been to the same meetings, right? I mean, I haven't, Amy's not here. All hazards was canceled the last two times and so, but we went to the special JPA meeting and as all of us were there and that's basically all I have to report.
I don't think there's anything else.
Stubbin?
No, all I have was a JPA.
So I attended the JPA meeting just as the rest of our council. And then COG, our budget was approved. Our performance audits, they said that we're exempl, we are an exemplary COG for a small city. They also approved the minute orders for the federal highway program or improvement program funding for City of Angels Murphy's Grade Road project so we can hopefully.
Close that out. Finally close that out.
Yes. Uh, let's see what else. Construction continues on the western portion of the wagon trail. So diversion of the creek has begun and they should complete that by the end of the year. There's some projects planned on Valley Springs. They are supplying for a grant, which has had been a priority since two thousand and two for Highway twenty-six and Olive Orchard Road. There are consistently vehicle issues there, so they're excited about that project. And there is a new interim director at Public Works at the county, Craig Pedro, Pedro?
Oh, he came back.
He's the interim. And then Robert Patinter is the deputy director. I'll let you talk about CTA goodbye. So, and then CTA, which I'll just draw on to report on. So that was COG and we will not have a meeting in July.
Seth. Seth, I report.
I have nothing to report other than what I already just spoke about was regard to the fire and you and JPA.
JPA.
I also attended farmer's market on Friday, which was really lovely. And I got a lot of my free, I got my free site.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a nice venue.
I'm sorry.
So.
Yep, attended farmer's market, JPA, and then CTA, Calderie Transit Authority. And so we had a short meeting on that, but it was mostly, we approved the twenty-four, twenty-five final operations budget.
Also found out we're getting another electric van and bus that will be added to the fleet.
Van and a bus?
Yeah.
All this stuff was ordered and then dropped and then made a reordering, so.
Item thirteen is calendar. Did Rose happen to send us a calendar? She'll probably not.
She'll be filling in.
Perfect. Future agenda items fourteen, we've spoke about one specifically, I think.
Yeah, I just have a couple of, Will, when you talking about the rig study soon, Michelle?
We will. So I did meet with the rig consultant last Friday. And they're all on board to present a draft to you on the second meeting, I think it's July sixteenth, to council. They said they won't have the full report, but they'll have numbers for you and whatnot. I did.
Get them spits.
I did speak with them regarding. See if I have that here in my notes. But we went over some of the, because it was good because it was the day after the JPA meeting. So I asked them about your reserve question. He said it's always good to, he recommends a year of payments in your reserve account. But he said it's a very low risk, even if we wanted to spend them down some to smooth out, you know, looking at whatever the rate increases or whatnot. We could look for the UTEC because they're proposing that fixed contribution. And so if you wanted to use some of those repairs to smooth it out and not increase the rates, that could be something that would still be a very low risk even if we wanted to. But recommended is, is a one year of payments, which is about what we have right now, a little bit more than that.
And then Michelle, is he going to come up with a proposal to level the playing field for our restaurants?
Yes, I did ask him about that. I told him that it would be important for him to show council how the volume metric pricing would be and how that would benefit, you know, what the cost would be for everyone and what would be a part of that versus putting everyone back on the flat rate fee. So he's, I wish to present both for you to decide how you like to proceed. And then I also, let's see, we had talked about. Yeah, he, it was, we updated him on some cash balances for June thirty of twenty twenty-four, so where we're at now. Oh, he said it was important, so I can give him the five-year CIP. And he said he'd actually like to see year six through ten. That that's actually important to look at the big picture of where we're going. It also, I guess, allows us that if we finish up those projects and we're aggressive and we finish them up early because they were part of that plan. He has a way of factoring the cost or using his debt or whatnot that we had identified. So it's not like hitting and impacting the fees, but he says it's important to, it would be really good to think about ten years. So then it would be something that if we finished up our five-year plan and we wanted to start working on something, if we secured some grant, you know, funding or whatnot, that that would be allowable in the rate study because we had listed that.
Some good.
That's another piece we found, egg blue. And then I think there's a, there's a discussion that I think he's going to bring on the sixteenth regarding six-mile billing increase rates and costs. So that is a contract we have through CCWD. It's for sewer. And it has, we've never increased the rates, even though the contract says we can. But when we do the analysis, we're, it's only costing us like fifty percent. So we're not even at the full that they had projected.
Connected.
We're still under. But he said we need to look at what, he'll take into account our current fixed costs that we could put in, so he doesn't know if that was originally factored into the rates that they're paying. So look at certain fixed costs that we have in our sewer and then looking at what that capacity is and allocated across. But he said we just need to have a discussion based on the cost to identify that we want to keep that the same because it allows for. And there, I guess, at the number that they had planned, number of units, that they are just a little under that. So they're only at fifty percent.
And then the other one I have is just kind of update at Mark Twain Elementary, the installation of the additional.
Stop signs.
Yeah, stop signs, parking. And I know they're looking for, I don't know if they're waiting till they have a new superintendent on board, but I, yeah.
I spoke with Krista Flynn a week or so ago about just the timeframe. And it sounded like it was on the, maybe on the schedule or they were going to get on the schedule, their work order schedule or whatever it is.
Okay, okay.
Here in the, in the coming weeks. So that's all I know, though. It's, it's a couple of work projects, so I don't know where it's at in getting completion. But talking about the crosswalks, the stop sign, all that kind of stuff.
And all the signage that says no parking during those hours?
Yeah. And Amy would be the other one that was involved in that process too. So I'm not sure, I don't have any details on that.
And we did recently receive some funding for the Safe Streets for All that deals with that area. I don't know what's all involved. Amy and I are going to meet because we need to go through the grant and accept everything. But that, that's already been awarded and so we'll know the next steps. But I, she said it deals with what we're doing at Mark Twain Elementary. There's some funding for it. And then I just have, we had the discussion during the budget meeting about community development funds that last year we had set aside ninety-five thousand of our COVID monies. And whether or not that was something we can, I have it attached to our wishlist of things to add to the budget later on, but that might be something, because it had spelled out that we were going to develop a program and have a committee to assess the applications and award it. And we never did that. There's another piece, Amy and I are going to meet with our CDBG consultant, the one that's helping us close out the fire station. She told us there's money available for micro businesses. And she felt like our community really fit the need of that. And it would be money for development in that. The applications open up in July, so we could, you know, talk to her, start getting ideas in place on what we can do, see if it's feasible, see what that plan would be. And then we could bring it here and then put in the application in July. And maybe there's some funds set aside for that.
So, but that's kind of what we're pursuing.
So I have that down as a future item because we can continue that.
Thank you. Any other recommendations or requests? Saying then, looking for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Chamenta?
Aye.
Brolia?
Aye.
Hada?
Aye.